Uh, do we stand?
Members, it's time and this is the session on the environment. I first invite Mr. Wong Kung-seng Satri from the environment and his team. I will first invite the um SEN to deliver a speech before I open up for questions for members. Members who intend to speak, please press a button. First, I would invite the secretary to speak for approximately five minutes. Secretary, please. Chairman, the financial secretary's budget speech highlighted two new initiatives on our side, namely allocating another one billion dollars for departments to install renewable energy facilities and providing more charging facilities for electric vehicles. Hundred and twenty million dollars will be allocated to provide over one thousand additional public charges at government car parks. I would like to brief members on other work priorities of the Environment Bureau in the fi- in the coming financial year. In terms of mitigating private change or climate change, nine hundred million dollars have been earmarked earlier to implement energy-saving projects in government buildings and made good progress. We are confident that the target to reduce electricity consumption of government buildings by five percent within five years could be reached in this financial year. Moreover, one billion dollars earmarked for installing RE facilities at government venues in the last two FYs is already benefiting leisure and cultural services, facilities, government offices, government schools, and sewerage treatment works. The additional one billion dollar this year will allow us to do even more. Pursuant to the requirement of the Paris Agreement, we need to draw up by 2020 a long-term decarbonization strategy for the SAR up to 2050. We have invited the Council for Sustainable Development to conduct a public engagement exercise shortly for this purpose and to engage the public on how to transit towards a low-carbon society. On improvement of air quality, we are making preparations for phasing out Euro IV diesel commercial vehicles and planning the trial of retrofitting Euro IV and V franchise buses with enhanced selective catalytic reduction systems to reduce emissions. Having completed the review of air quality objectives or AQOs last December, we will launch a three-month public consultation this year. If it is decided to tighten the AQOs, we will submit an amendment bill to the Legislative Council for implementing the new AQOs as soon as possible. Implementation of municipal solid waste charging is at the core of our waste reduction strategy. The relevant bill is being scrutinized at LECO. This year, we are providing additional funding of around three to four hundred million dollars to enhance support of the work related to waste reduction and recycling. Upon implementation of MSW charging in the future, annual funding will increase to about eight hundred million to one billion dollars, which is commensurate with the amount of the estimated gross revenue to be generated from MSW charging, thereby achieving the effects of dedicated fund for dedicated use. We are preparing to roll out a pilot scheme in three districts this year to provide free collection service for non-commercial and non-industrial waste plastic. We also plan to introduce a pilot scheme this year to collect food waste. On the producer responsibility schemes, the one for waste electrical and electronic equipment is being implemented progressively. Moreover, we will draft, we will submit the draft subsidiary legislation regarding the PRS for glass beverage containers to LECO this year in order to pursue its full implementation. Our next step is to take forward the PRS for plastic beverage containers. The relevant pilot scheme for reverse vending machines will be implemented in the second half of the year. On marine refuse, apart from our effort in coordinating and stepping up cleaning, monitoring, and patrolling work through our interdepartmental working group, we will also strengthen collaboration with our Guangdong counterparts in marine environment management. We will also enhance communication with the public and provide support to shoreline cleanup organized by different organizations. On water quality, to continually strengthen our sewerage infrastructure, facilities, and tackle nearshore pollution, we plan to seek funding approval from LECO this year for fifteen sewerage projects of some twenty-nine billion dollars in total to upgrade or construct sewerage treatment works, sewers, village sewerage, sewerage systems, and dry weather flow interceptors. On countryside and nature conservation, since the establishment of the Countryside Conservation Office in July last year, we have been actively coordinating with government departments and stakeholders. CCO will launch a countryside conservation funding scheme in second half of the year to support interactions and collaboration between NGOs and villages to implement conservation and revitalization projects. In addition, we will consult the soon-to-be-established Advisory Committee on Countryside Conservation on the reverse minor improvement works in Laochiwo and Shaolotong. I look forward to strengthening our interaction and collaboration with LECO and all sectors of the community as well as our joint efforts so that we can continue to contribute to the sustainable development of Hong Kong. Thank you. Eight members intend to speak, so I will read out the names. Mr. Ken Leng, Mr. Ray Chan, Mr. Frankie Yik, Mr. Ma Feng Kwok, Mr. Eddie Chu, Mr. Michael Tian, Ms. Claudia Mo, Dr. Elizabeth Quod, and Mr. Jeremy Tam. First, Mr. Ken Leng, four minutes. Thank you. I'd like to ask about ENB one-one-six and ENB zero-eighteen. The secretary said the funding would be used to increase the number of charging stations for electric vehicles. There were news recently that manufacturers would stop manufacturing LPG minibus. And there is speculation that these um minibus would be, well, diesel minibus would be deployed instead. So do you have any measures in place in light of the situation? Are you going to introduce electric minibus? In 2018, we only had six electric minibus in Hong Kong. So if LPG minibus are to be phased out, uh, do you have any measures in place to deal with the situation? These, my second question is about ENB zero-eighteen on ivory. Last week, we detected a batch of illegally imported um rhino horns. So how would the government deal with the confiscated ivory or rhino horns? In 2014, the AFCD addressed a question for myself. They said they would incinerate the confiscated ivory products. And I'd like to know the costs associated with such um work. I would defer to my colleague, Mrs. Alice Chang, Deputy Director, and the Director of the AFCD. We were informed that by late 2020 or early 2021, manufacturers will stop manufacturing LPG minibus. And this is from one of the main um minibus manufacturers in Hong Kong. After that, they would start supplying Euro VI diesel minibus. For Euro VI minibus, the RSP and NOX emissions would be eighty and fifty percent lower than Euro V models. And the emission levels, levels are also much lower than the Euro III models. We will encourage minibus to join our Pilot Green Transport Fund. And earlier, we approved a few applications already for hybrid vehicles. So hopefully, we can transition to electric minibus in the future. And in terms of pilot testing the electric minibus, we will conduct planning on electric minibus and charging stations for electric minibus. Are there currently any manufacturers that make electric minibus? Or are we merely looking at prototypes? We are yet to have any um mature manufacturers who make electric minibus. We are yet to see any manufacturers. And this is why we hope to um plan for a newer standard. In 2018, we mentioned that for newly registered minibus, we hope to tighten the emission standards to Euro VI standards. So at least we can ensure that the new minibus would be up to Euro VI standards and not Euro V. What about the question on ivory products? For confiscated ivory products, we destroyed twenty-eight tons of ivory products by incineration. A small portion of ivory products are used for sites approved users such as for R and D or education. For the outstanding confiscated ivory products, they would be dealt with in the same manner in the coming year. Mr. Ray Chan, four minutes. ENB zero-four-six. The government said that in 2019 to 20, there will be fifty posts involved in taking forward MSW charging. The estimated annual expenditure is forty-one million dollars and another forty, seventy-four million dollars has been earmarked for preparatory work. And the Bill's Committee is still scrutinizing the bill, and we do not know when it will be passed. So how are you going to spend this sum? The financial year is from the first of April to the thirty-first of March next year, and we do, we don't know whether the bill will be passed by next year. So are you going to spend the forty-one million dollars after the bill is passed? For the another seventy-four million dollars, would the preparatory work be conducted after the bill is passed? The other question is on zero-four-zero. On recurrent expenditure and maintenance of the district cooling system, the government said that the recurrent expenditure would be twenty-three point five-three million dollars, while the estimated recurrent expenditure in 2019 to 20 will be fifty-eight point fifty, point five-eight million dollars. So the expenditure will be doubled after a year. And the idea is to recover costs. So can you offer more interpretation of the relevant income and under head zero-four-two or subhead zero-four-two, underhead eleven? The recurrent expenditure of the DCS in 2019 to 20 would be fifty-eight million dollars, while the charges would only amount to um forty-four, about forty-four million dollars. And apparently, you will not be able to recover the costs. I wonder whether the government will shed, shed some light on the income. I would defer to um Mr. Um and the Director of the MSD. Among the um seventy-four million dollars, even though the bill is yet to be passed, we hope that um by end 2020, we can implement MSW charging, and there is a series of preparatory work, including the manufacturing and distribution of plastic bags in the future and the research costs for our system, et cetera. So these are the main costs involved. On the other, on the hand, there would be education and publicity efforts. We have launched a series of um community promotion efforts, and we hope that um different people would be able to take part. So my point is whether the, you would begin to spend the money before the bill is passed. For certain areas, work such as publicity, work has started. And certainly, we have started to spend part of the budget already. For other costs such as the um R and D for the designated plastic bags in the future, we will begin work based on the progress of the bill.
The other question on district cooling system. Thank you for the question. We are looking for recovery of full costs, including construction costs. We will recoup it through the sale of cooling water. And in terms of operation, there will be electricity, electricity cost. If we have more users, we will have to spend more on electricity. We are going to use a thirty-year recruitment period and including construction and operating cost, and we are looking for recovery of full cost. Well, I have to take your word for it, right? Because I will not be able to check your accounts every year. Mr. Chan is saying whether you can let us know how you calculate this thirty-year recruitment period. In the law, we are submitting to the LECO. We will tell members that we have a calculation basis. Every five years, we'll come back to LECO to tell you about changes in the criteria for charging. By the end of every five years, we will give a full report to LECO. Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Frankie Yik, four minutes. Thank you, Chair. First, I'd like to go to ENB one-six-seven. You are preparing to phase out Euro IV commercial vehicles. You said that all the vehicles should be replaced, but then now you say you are happy to remove these vehicles first without having them really replaced. This is all right with civil, uh, uh, commercial vehicles in general. But then with regard to franchised buses and the minibus, there will be a problem because there is an operating license attached to each vehicle. First, you need to have a new vehicle before you can scrap the old one. It is very difficult for minibus to operate nowadays. Banks are not lending money to them. And now you are saying that the Euro IV vehicles should be dumped, and if you can make the money, you can go for a Euro VI or else you can go bankrupt. My question for you is, how can you help them de-pack the two vehicles? They should be able to get the subsidy before they go for a new vehicle. But then in your reply, you say that this is a problem for the transport department, and it has nothing to do with your project. My question is, you are asking people to scrap their old vehicle, and then it's like you tell them to jump into hell and they should be left to be burned. But then can you talk to the transport department for some coordination so people can face up to the operating difficulties? The thing is, nobody is willing to drive the minibus. They may have the vehicle, but they cannot rent them out. I think you should coordinate the matter, or else you are really making life very difficult for these people. You say it has nothing to do with a scheme of phasing out pre-Euro IV DCVs. I really don't like this sentence. Deputy Commissioner. Well, we were trying to explain that actually, this is because of the cap for public minibus. It is forty-three-hundred-something. So there is this passenger service license attached to a public light bus. We are now thinking of phasing out pre-Euro IV DCVs. Whether it is a matter of money or a matter of the mechanism and also the timing. After listening to your views, we can go back and reconsider the issue. But all in all, the passenger service license issue should be a decision by the transport department. I understand. I hope the Deputy Commissioner can go with me to the TD for securing a reasonable arrangement because the issue sprang from your requirement to replace the vehicles. Second one, one-six-five. You have new fuel vehicles. One hundred and seventy-five are light vans or sixty percent of the total new fleet. I'd like to know why you have given permission for so many light vans. Is it that these hundred and sixty-five are from, one hundred and seventy-five are from different brands and different models? So you want to test them out because you are giving people the impression that you are giving money for people to buy these cars? Well, I'd like to say that these are comparatively smaller vehicles. And the technology is more mature. So this is the objective fact. Is it that, uh, Mrs. Alice Zheng would like to add? We're actually in the Pilot Green Transport Fund. It is not that we want to try out many more light vans. We want to try out every type of vehicle, but as the secretary was saying, we have more smaller vehicles that we can try out. And in terms of light vans, we tried out one or two models. And yet now they are not on the market anymore because we tested them a few years ago and the performance was not good and the recruitment period was long. And they did not have a long journey that they can travel. So the member is right, we are testing out different brands and different models which are better. And recently, we have had quite satisfactory tests. Next one, Mr. Ma Feng Kwok, four minutes. Thank you, Chair. One-three-three, please. About restored landfills and the development of recreational facilities on them. The phase one subsidy period saw one successful project. Originally, there were two, but unfortunately, when the project was implemented, it was found that there was not enough funding. The funding cap was a hundred million dollars and the operator withdrew because of the insufficient funding. Then I asked, what happened with this project? It was said that they would look for a replacement for phase one, or I asked you whether you would include this as a phase two project. An experience from phase one told us that actually the subsidy may not be enough. When you go for the second phase, will you review your funding cap and enhance it? And will you make it more flexible for people to use the resources? Secretary.
Mrs. Vicky Quoc can add to what I'm going to say. In simple terms, we need to come to grips with the experience in phase one and then see how we can enhance the future phases. Mrs. Vicky Quoc, Deputy Director. Thank you. The restoration of landfill scheme. Well, in phase one, we implemented one successful proj- successful project, and the other one was withdrew, withdrawn. It's rather unfortunate. And we learned a lot of experience from this. And we found that there were development limitations for restored landfills. To NGOs in general, if they were to develop projects on restored landfills, they would face challenges. So the task force on restored landfills reviewed the situation. We would be looking at Ma Yautong landfill, and we are going to do a comprehensive review. We will take a look at the limitations with regard to restored landfills. And we want to see whether public money can be used to provide infrastructure and public facilities so that the operator can come in at a later stage. In other words, we are going to make use of public resources to provide public facilities. And no matter who the operator will be, it will be easier for him. The member asked about future options. These will be included in our review at the present stage. Our plan is that within the year, we will complete the review and then we'll roll out phase two. Well, my first part was about the withdrawal of that project. Will you consider finding a replacement within phase one so you can quicken the process? Uh, if not, what are the considerations? Thank you. At that time, the task force was of the view that there were many applicants putting forward many views. But because of consideration of a fair process, we now do not intend to find a replacement from the batch of applications. As I said, we are going to conduct this review, and then we will take a look at all restored landfills to see where facilities can be provided and where there could be more flexibility. And then we will roll out projects at a later stage. Next one, uh, Mr. Eddie Chu, four minutes.
Thank you. Uh, zero-four-three, zero-one-one, zero-two-oh. Zero-four-three is about promotion of renewable energy. Uh, you say that there would be one billion dollars for retrofitting government facilities. Another one is about the fit-in tariff. I have heard that after receiving a deposit of several tens of thousands of dollars for installing photovoltaic panels, uh, the operators or contractors just absconded. Now, will you consider doing what other departments are doing? And that is to come up with a list of recognized contractors by government so as to protect consumers. This is the first question. Second, zero-one-one. This is about conservation of turtles in Lam Ma. In your answer, you said that starting from the year twenty-seventy-three, turtles had metal marks on their body, and you have been tracking them down by satellite in the last five years. I'd like to ask you, since 2018, is it that you have not seen turtles in around Lam Ma? And then the third question, zero-two-oh, Wowboz. In answer E of the question, you said that in the pilot scheme, those that were trapped, neutered, or moved to rural or remote rural areas. Now, I don't really understand. You trapped a hundred and fifty-five, but you did not tell me where these went. Is it that they were euthanized? Three questions. I will ask EMSD and also other officials. Mr. Sit first. With regard to promotion of renewable energy, the fit-in tariff indeed has provided a great impetus for us. We are helping the public to make use of this plan. Say, for example, we have a dedicated RE net for people to get the necessary information, including what Mr. Chu was saying. And that is contractors in the market who can install photovoltaic panels for the public. Secondly, do you vet these contractors first? Well, we hope there would be more contractors providing the service. If the contractors come forward, then we will allow them to be included in our net so the public can have a choice. And to answer directly, we do not do any vetting of these contractors because we hope to include more contractors. In the process, as I was saying, the public may have questions as to how they should choose the contractors. We have a telephone hotline. In this past period, we have received one thousand inquiries. Two hundred and seventy-eight had to do with these contractors. And then apart from this hotline, we proactively go to districts to organize seminars and talks in order to provide information to the public. The response has been very enthusiastic. The response has been very enthusiastic and we have already conducted like thirty talks.
Mister Lang, can you um address the questions on the green turtles and wild boars? In recent years, we did not um find any um spawning turtles on the beaches. As for the number of wild pig- wild boars captured, about one hundred and sixty were captured, of which about one hundred and twenty were relocated to um remote areas, while seventy-six underwent contraception and neutering. And um some of the balls were smaller in size and they would be um released in situ. So for the captured wild balls, they were other, they were either relocated or released, released in situ. And none of them have been euthanized. Next, Mister Michael Tian, four minutes. Thank you. Secretary. I want to start by saying that um I'd like to thank you for adopting our um adopting our um proposal. And um in Au- in August last year at the Xinhuan District Council, I proposed this um smart reverse lending vending machine based on the German model. And in Germany, twenty-five cents in euro would be reimbursed. And the recycling rate was ninety-six percent, so I certainly support your proposal. But I think the um, I I think we need more of the same machine. So you should be more generous in your reimbursements. They are offering twenty-five, zero point two five um euros. So if you want the the vending machines to be more successful, you might need to think about the um level of money offered. I'd like to ask about zero four five on the landfill contracts. We thought on the issue of the leakage of um sewage at landfills at um Hapak Nai Chun. For the um oyster farmers, they told us that only twenty percent of the oysters survived. And years ago, some um villagers rented um ponds and they lost a few million dollars over the span of years. Some lost um three million dollars wearing shrimps and crabs. And um they have suffered very steep losses. You said you realized that um there was a leakage of sewage at those villages and you condemned the relevant contractors. So the DB, the design, build, operate model was adopted at these landfills. You you are asking the contractors to to design, build and operate a landfill for more than ten years. Um, if you split up the um contracts, no one might be willing to operate. And that's why you adopted this model. But um under this model, if a contractor is not up to standard, what are you going to ask them to do? If you fire the contractor, no one would take up the mess. So you are literally begging them to continue. And um if they do not perform well, all you can do is to find them. From twenty thirteen to eighteen, there were numerous complaints and total fines of eight million dollars were imposed, while they received operating um fees of more than three hundred million dollars per year. While in total, they were only fined eight million dollars. So if I were them, I would just persist. I wouldn't mind paying the penalties. And um you are asking, you are looking for contractors again for this exercise in Tunmoon. Are you going to step up the penalties? Let's say the penalties should um should be level with the um size of the contract. You might be concerned that no one will then be interested to bid for the projects and this is another story altogether. Thank you very much. Thank you for your support. In our smart reverse vending machines, we will refer to overseas experience. In terms of the um level of refunds, um different, different levels have been adopted. And um where possible, for new contracts, we would see how they can be refined. Miss Claudia Mo, four minutes. Thank you. I'd like to ask about zero two zero about wild balls. First of all, I'd like to thank the government, especially the AFCD, for listening and disbanding the civilian hunting team for more than a decade. We have been fighting for it um in the name of animal rights and this is certainly music to our ears. For the wild ball hunting teams, have their ammunition been returned or is this a government for the police? Have they returned the um ammunition, Mister Lang? I believe um they would follow up on this with the police. All right. In the coming year, I see that you will need twelve extra officers with an extra budget of three point six million dollars to deal with the wild balls. I understand that um the budget is spent on contraception, capture and neutering. We need more manpower for capture, neutering and contraception and also to set up publicity and education. And we will work with the AVHD on how we can deal with the litter bins. Well, I appreciate the design of your new litter bins. And um there is a um foot pedal and that would stop the wild balls from stealing food. The director said hundred and sixty wild balls were captured, of which one hundred and twenty were relocated to um better areas, so to speak, so they can feed better. About seventy-eight were um captured and contracepted. So I think the numbers didn't add up to one sixty. I wondered why, or perhaps I was wrong. Of the one hundred and sixty odd wild balls, some of them were um administered with um contraception vaccines. So there's an overlap in the figures. All right, so now I get it. I'd like to ask about zero two two on the smuggling of wildlife or endangered species. More than eight thousand kilograms of pangolin scales were smuggled, smuggled. And I want to tell the um government that you can still buy pangolin um scales or the powder of the scales in Hong Kong, and this is appalling. For um category one endangered species, the maximum penalty is ten million dollars and ten years of imprisonment. So apparently, these are very harsh penalties for um cat one species. And um the next tier is one million dollars and seven years of imprisonment. Um, these sound like very effective penalties. But when you look at the actual um number of convicted um offenses, the maximum penalty imposed last year was four weeks of prison. For reptile skin products, the maximum penalty imposed was only six weeks. So this question is for the secretary. Should we um think about um our penalties? Recently, we reviewed the relevant policies and um increased the penalties. And after some time, we will review the results. Are you going to review it after two years? Well, at a timely junction, we will um review the policy. Doctor is with Quat four minutes. I want to follow up on the um issue of ivory. We um legislated on the policy. And um apparently twenty-eight tons of ivory products were confiscated were um destroyed and more will be incinerated next year. Every time when ivory products are incinerated, we will send a very clear message to the world that Hong Kong is very hard in um cracking down on ivory. We have not destroyed any products for two years, so what are the standards? When are we going to um carry out incineration? So why are the um ten tons still here? The secretary said the bill has just been passed, so um they would wait and see. But every time we um make any arrests on smuggling of wildlife, if the penalties imposed are lenient, we will, we are telling the world that despite the heavier penalties um legislated, the um actual punishments are not, would not be heavy. So um for that, the price paid by the smugglers would be too low. So so um do the authorities have to do more to um convey the um harsh penalties? As for the green turtles in Shanghuan, we have said that um we are concerned that green turtles have not spawned for a number of years. And the reason is that the um beaches are too noisy, there are too many vessels. And we suggested designated the area a protected area so that um noise can be restricted. And um vessel activity should also be um restricted, but the government has yet to do anything. As for marine pollution, we have been talking about microplastics for a long time. Until the government bans the use of microplastics in Hong Kong, our oceans will continue to suffer. And if there are microplastics in the food chain, um human beings will eventually suffer. So these are about questions eighteen and eleven. For the three, first three questions, I would defer to the um director of AFCD. We will monitor the si- situation on the protection of wildlife and we will certainly send clear messages. For microplastics, we are conducting a detailed study. And um at a timely juncture, we will report to Lesho. Mister Lang, Director. As for confiscated ivory, in the last two years, um the cases are still outstanding, so we cannot destroy the ivory yet. Once all um legal procedures are clear, we will plan to destroy the ivory or put them into um cites approved uses. For green turtles, at Shanghuan, we have plans to expand the um restrict restrictive hours and um physical boundary of the restricted area. And we will consult the relevant stakeholders when time is appropriate. Any follow-up questions? The director, while the secretary said they are conducting a detailed study on microplastics, when will the results be announced? I'm afraid that the study might drag on for years. I would defer to the deputy director. Thank you. We have started the study on microplastics. It will be completed within a year. There are three main areas, one global trend, two the Hong Kong situation, and three the recommended controls. We have had more than ten meetings with the trade. And we are constantly consulting the trade and formulating proposals. After that, we would consult the Lesho. Mister Jeremy Tam, four minutes. Thank you. I want to vol on question one hundred and fifty-five on electric vehicles. In your reply, under table three, you tabulated the number of um EVs purchased by the government in past three years. Um, ten in twenty sixteen, seven in twenty seventeen and eight, twenty eighteen respectively. The numbers were very low. Well, first of all, do, um is the government satisfied about these numbers? Is the government satisfied with the number of EVs purchased?
Secretary. Looking at the past few years and the types of EV private cars, well, we don't have too many such models. But going forward, we can see many more choices. We are going to strengthen coordination within government to see how we can use more EVs for different purposes. Chairman, well, my question was very clear. I was talking about saloon cars. In the past few years, I think there were a lot of choices as well. If there had been no choices, you would not have been able to purchase any. You said you would encourage such purchase. What are you going to do? Will you have an internal guideline? Saying that if you are going to buy saloon cars and if departments decide not to buy an EV, then they would have to explain and apply for the purchase of a diesel vehicle. Mrs. Alice Zheng, Deputy Director, thank you. Within government, when we purchase vehicles, we follow a policy. If there are EVs available, we should go for EVs. And if not, we need to explain. As the secretary said, we might be able to do more on this basis. Mister Tam, you were talking about saloon cars. In the past few years, sometimes departments had their own operational needs and they had to consider the size of the vehicles and the roadworthiness of the vehicles. I was seeing whether we could do more coordination on the basis of that policy, where we are talking to departments now. Chairman, it's very simple. If you want the public to do it, you have to lead by example. If you also find that it is difficult and that your departments are not willing, then you, actually, you are doing, making use of public money and you do not have to pay the duty. You are building a lot of projects at Kai Tech or other places. You are already also building charges at these new buildings. So you are well equipped and yet if you cannot lead by example, um it's not a very good thing. What you said was right, but how can you mobilize departments to go for EVs? Tell them that they have to come up with a rather good explanation if they don't. And of course, people will prefer the easy way out. If you ask them for really lengthy explanations for not going for EVs, then I'm sure they will not want to insist on diesel vehicles. Since you are always duplicating your efforts in other areas, then why don't you do it for this area as well? Secretary? Because I think Mister Tam was only making a remark. Well, thank you. Next one, Mister Roy Kwong, four minutes. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to go to zero two one about Chinese white dolphins. As you know, it is a mascot for our reunification. But under B, you have given me figures and I'm really worried. In twenty fourteen, there was sighting of eighty-seven and then twenty seventeen, only forty-seven. And then you are doing some analysis with the figures. You say, we don't know whether there is going to be a rise or a drop. But then we know that within a few years, the figure dropped from eighty-seven to forty-seven. And there are reports saying that when Chinese white dolphins are newly born, their survival rate has also gone down. I'd like to ask, what has happened? Is this related to our reclamation projects in recent years? Is there a problem with water quality or is it that? Well, it is because of the Hong Kong Zhuhai Macau Bridge. Well, it is because of the Hong Kong Zhuhai Macau Bridge. Is it that, like department said, they are dwindling in numbers steadily? Because we are thinking that they may be extinguished if this continues. Mr. Lang, DAFC, with regard to the change in numbers of Chinese white dolphins in recent years, we can see that indeed, the numbers have gone down because we use the same method of survey. But then we looked at different waters. In the past, we went from the north or northwestern land town. And then now they are in other waters, like in the southwest of land town. But we don't have any figures showing us that the death rate has undergone a big change. Overall speaking, it may be because there are projects in Northland Town and because of other factors, the white dolphins have gone to the southwestern part of Land Town and also mainland waters. This is what our observation tells us. I would describe this as a warning. I'm most unsettled by these figures. The AFCD has supported a project and in the survey, I think this is a sharp drop in numbers that is seen. We are concerned that there might be extinction of the species. What can the department do? How can you make sure that this unification mascot would not be extinguished? Director, thank you. We set up marine parks and marine reserves to provide protected waters for the inhabitation and feeding of dolphins. We have got the Long Koo Chao, Sha Chao Marine Park. And in recent years, we have set up the Brothers Marine Park. And then at Northwest Land Town, we are going to build a new marine park. We hope all the designated work can be done within the year. This will have a positive impact in conserving Chinese white dolphins. And in marine reserves, we are going to lay artificial reefs and also fish fries in order to increase fisheries resources and habitats for the use of Chinese white dolphins. Allow me to add regarding the apparent increasing death rate of calves. Can you do something to reverse the trend, Director? Well, we don't have the so-called apparent rising death rate of dolphin calves. But we can see from a stranding that there has not been big changes in the last few years. Ms. Yoonis Young, one seventy and one seventy one, about recycling, recycling of food waste and also the three-color bins. The administration has been doing a lot to promote the charging scheme for municipal solid waste or MSW. We basically support you. This is what is proposed by the New People Party, that you should cooperate with the business sector for the manufacture of designated bags. I think the response is good. I'd like you to update me on the situation. Secondly, about the three-color bins. I asked you the question, but you did not give me any figures. You did not tell me how much refuse and the relevant weight has been collected. We are promoting a few things now with regard to three-color bins, which will help us separate the waste. And secondly, recycling. Where does the refuse go? And also how you can educate the public for reducing waste at source and also separating the waste at source? And number three, charging and four, food waste. All these are intertwined. We are talking about local municipal waste. How can we tackle it? And how can you separate the waste at source and recycle the waste and turn them into useful material? I still would like to seek figures with the three-color bins. It's some members were saying you should have reverse vending machines. Even if you pay ten cents, twenty cents, it's still an incentive. So are you going to support any groups? I know it is difficult if the government works alone. Will you be encouraging green groups to set up these reverse vending machines? Maybe you would seek to do it with aluminium and plastic bottles. It would be easy to deal with paper, but you can do a lot with cans and bottles. Are you going to do it? Well, yes, these issues are intertwined indeed. I will tackle two issues. One, the designated bags or DBs. How they can be reused? Like the in Taipei, they use the bags at least twice. We will be talking to the business sector. I'm optimistic that they will have a positive view. Secondly, reduction and recycling, we must work with the community. We will have new resources to do publicity in the community together with community groups. We are happy to listen to views. Mrs. Quoc, thank you. I'd like to talk about food waste. We have a series of measures to tackle food waste collection and recycling. In twenty fourteen, there was a scheme for food waste. In the territory, we must set up a network for food waste collection. So we can collect food waste on a large scale so that there can be the turning of waste into energy. And I think members know that we are promoting the Organic Resources Recovery Centre. Phase one started to collect in July last year. And every day now, we are receiving a hundred tons food waste every day. Its capacity should allow us to collect two hundred tons every day. As the member knows, we are seeking funding to build OPEC two. On the other hand, we are cooperating with the Drainage Services Department to make use of the scheme to turn waste by using the sludge and aerobic co-digestion technology. We are going to also launch this food waste sewage sludge and aerobic co-digestion technology to Sha Tin. Once the technology becomes mature, we'll be able to enhance the technology in order to expedite the processing of food waste at our sewage plants. We hope that by twenty twenty three or the mid twenty thirties, we'll be able to treat half of the food waste in Hong Kong. And that is about twelve hundred tons every day. By international standards, if we can treat half of the food waste proposed, that is already a reasonable standard. So we hope to go in that direction. I hope you will support us in developing this network of collection of food waste. Mr. Tong Yijie, four minutes. First, I'd like to follow up one sixty, which is about restoring and also reactivating the landfills.
It was launched three or four years ago and four landfills were involved. And this is certainly unsatisfactory. And the government is launching the second phase of the funding scheme. I wonder whether the government will wait another three or four years before they come up with something new if the scheme is not successful. Will the government be more proactive in promoting the scheme? Mrs. Quoc, thank you. Based on the experience from phase one of the funding scheme, we learned a lot. And we learned how we can enhance the funding scheme ahead of phase two. We are currently conducting a review. And the review will cover all the restored landfills. If they are to be made available to different organizations. Or alternatively, they might be used for other purposes or for recreational facilities. If they are to be used for other uses, we would look at the facilities required and whether they can address public needs. If the answer is no, will the government use public money to first provide for these facilities? Meanwhile, in phase two of the funding scheme for nonprofit-making organizations or national sports associations, is there any room for improving their coordination with the government? Or whether any change in roles might achieve better results? Basically, this will be a comprehensive review and time-wise, we will expedite our work because we want to put these restored landfills to actual use. So within the year, the review will be completed and we will implement phase two as soon as possible. Chairman, I'd like to follow up on thirty one and thirty five on inert construction waste. The government said that these materials can be used for reclamation. But with the death of reclamation projects in recent years, the government has spent some one billion dollars every year to deal with these ways, including transporting these ways to Taishan or Guangdong Province. And this year, the demand for such public fill will increase from the trade. So can such inert C and D materials be used up? Miss Lau from the C D. Thank you very much. The cost would cover the operation of the field, public field reception facilities and costs of transporting these materials to the mainland and for reuse by the local construction industry, staff costs, administrative fees, et cetera. There are two current major reclamation projects in Hong Kong, including the Third Runway Project and the Tongchung Town Extension Project. We expect that a larger quantity of fill would be required this year. Are you going to use up the inert materials every year? About fifteen million tons of fill would arrive at our fill banks. And this year, we expect a larger amount. And our fill banks are already equipped with fill. And we, and in a gist, we feel that there will be enough fill for the year. So is, is there any need to transport the surplus fill somewhere else? Since the fill banks are more or less full, part of the materials this year would have to be transported to the mainland. Next, Mrs. Regina Yip, four minutes. I have two questions. One on zero nine one, the other on zero nine four. The first question is about noise. We are happy to see that from twenty sixteen to eighteen, there were very few noise complaints generated by aircrafts. But there were a lot of noise generated by traffic, including railway. As you know, the MTR lines are very close to residential developments. There are overhead sections that is very close to the city one development and the same goes for the light rail. Sometimes during weekends, during weekends, there are some vehicles that travel from Admiralty to the new territories. And very often, they move very fast and create a lot of noise. So how are you going to penalize them? As for noise generated by the railway, they are subject to the noise control ordinance. And once they reach a statutory limit, we would issue noise abatement notices for speeding vehicles and the subsequent noise generated. And they are subject to the NCO and the police would enforce the legislation. For modified vehicles creating excessive noise, they might be required to undertake noise tests. I want to ask about zero nine four. The government will promote green facilities. You have a pilot green transport fund and you will subsidize the trade in trial testing new green technologies. In the past, for Calhoun East and Kai Tech, there was a proposed environmentally friendly linkage system. So are we going to have such forms of transportation in our smart city? As you know, for the Energizing Calhoun East project, it was a form of infrastructure. While the other initiatives you mentioned are forms of subsidy to, for the private sector. And they would cover both commercial vehicles and trucks. So these are two different areas of work. What about the government's infrastructure? Nothing has been heard for a long time. I think that is within the ambit of the relevant bureau. I believe it is under the development bureau. And in recent years, we have seen green bonds. And the idea is to spend the investments on green infrastructure. So some, but we see that in recent years, with the installation of some green facilities, the rents has been increased disproportionately. So how are you going to deal with them? I think this is within the ambit of the CDB and we will be supportive of their measures. For green bonds, as I understand, there are local and international standards to gauge their cost effectiveness or returns. So there are both local and global standards. So for people who raise funds in the name of promoting conservation, you are obliged to monitor the situation. We would support the HK QAA's work in Hong Kong to facilitate credibility. Final question from Mr. Jeremy Tam, three minutes. I have a question about zero four four on the LPG filling stations. Mr. Kent Lang asks about the LPG minibuses as they will no longer be manufactured. You said you would You said you would adopt Euro six diesel vehicles would be would become the new standard. For Euro six D C Vs, um while compared with diesel minibus um which is um more environmentally friendly in terms of emissions. Under the Euro six standards, um there are different standards for L P G and diesel vehicles. According to Euro six standards, for L P G and D C V um vehicles, the um standards on N O X um carbon monoxide R S Ps are identical. In terms of roadside monitoring, um L P G vehicles will perform better than diesel vehicles. Um, what is the standard of the diesel vehicles that will be phased out or where um which manufacturing will stop? They will stop manufacturing diesel vehicles. And um they will only manufacture um diesel six um vehicles. You said um L P G vehicles are better than diesel vehicles, even um Euro six diesel vehicles. So um the filling stations you built ten years ago would be would become useless. So does the government have a blueprint of what they intend to do next? In other words, in the past ten years, you have um adopted L P G vehicles, including minibus and now you are asking the filling stations to um introduce L P G nozzles. If L P G is no longer the trend, is um would this become redundant? Instead, are you going to install charging stations instead? Well, this has been done in other countries. So um will the will Hong Kong gradually phase out L P G? If the same happens on taxis down the road, what would happen? You have more than ten um sites um that are designated as gas stations. So the sites are um granted free of charge and um these these stations are extremely crowded. So by twenty twenty or twenty one, so these two sites would expire. So what is your master plan? L P G minibus will no longer be manufactured. So what is the um policy on public transport um in the future? Would the government offer a response? Well, uh oh, I didn't say the you whether the use of L P G is wrong. I'm just asking about the the way forward. Um, about ten years ago, the performances of L P G vehicles and D C V vehicles were different. But um currently, the N O X um carbon monoxide and R S P standards are completely the same. In terms of roadside monitoring, L P G vehicles perform better. Because um there is a technology for roadside monitoring. The um L P G minibus manufacturers will stop manufacturing these um vehicles soon. So would these tw- twelve sites be made redundant? We still have eighteen thousand L P G taxis in operation, so there is still a demand. But um further down the road, if vehicles in the future no longer use L P G, um let's say if they transition to electric vehicles, we will need to think about the use of the relevant sites. And um like I said earlier, the government is um experimenting with the um use of electric minibus and hopefully we can um encourage a transition to electric vehicles. And the same goes for taxis. Work has been done under the fund, even though the um past work has not been very successful.
Therefore, we are hopefully going to use cleaner fuels like electricity. But technology-wise, we cannot really replace all L P G cars yet. Therefore, in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, when the leases for these twelve sites will come to an end one by one, we are now still considering what should be done. But I don't think by twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, we will not have use for all these twelve sites anymore because we don't think all L P Gs and taxis will become electric. Thank you very much for attending the meeting. This ends today's meeting and tomorrow's meeting will start at nine A M. Thank you.